Good evening and welcome to December 7, Chatham Select Board Meeting. This meeting is being recorded and will be available shortly hereafter for scheduled and on-demand viewing on any smartphone or tablet device. If anyone else is recording the meeting, please let me know. Pursuant to Governor Baker's June 16, 2021 signing of an act relative to extending certain COVID-19 measures adopted during the state of emergency, including the extension of his March 12, 2020 order suspending excuse me, suspending certain provisions of the open meeting law, that's general law, chapter 30A, section 20, until April 1, 2022, this meeting of the Chatham Select Board is being conducted via remote for public participation. Every effort will be made to ensure that the public can adequately access the proceedings as provided for in the order. A reminder that persons who would like to listen to this meeting while in progress may do so by calling the phone number 1-508-945-4410 and our conference ID is 134208476 pound, or join the meeting online via Microsoft Teams through the link in the posted agenda. While this is a live broadcast and simulcast on Channel 18, despite our best efforts, we may not be able to provide for real-time access. We will post a record of this meeting on the town's website as soon as possible. And just a reminder for everyone, please, if you're not on the select board right now and you're not speaking, please mute your mic and turn off your cameras. As I mentioned before the meeting, if you're on, you're going to be right up front and everybody's going to see what you're doing. So you really don't need to do that yet. Anyway, I see Jeff has joined us. Let me just go over, let me do a roll call first. We'll start with that. Let's start with Vice Chair Shereen Davis.
Present.
Our Clerk Corey Metters.
Present.
Select Board Member Nacastro.
Present.
Select Board Member Dykens.
Present.
Okay, we're all here. I'll wait till we get to the agenda item on the Council of Aging before we do a roll call. On that, just to, let's just do a quick review of what we're going to do tonight. We have two sets of minutes, then we'll have a public announcement, agenda item request. Again, that's just letting us know if something that's important to the town or if you need an agenda item. Then we'll get into new business, which is our first one is water testing and pumping update. The next thing we'll have is a public hearing, it's a utility poll hearing on Sam Rider Road. Then there'll be public comments on our business agenda. And that business agenda is first, a special one-day liquor license application for ports and company. Consider requests for seasonal closure of the Chatham Squire. Consider donation of an irrigation well at Cape Cool Park. And then a joint discussion with the council on aging, a board of directors on the senior community center and what are our steps forward? So with that, let's start with the minutes. The first one are November 23rd, motion to approve.
So moved.
Second.
Second, okay. Any comments? Seeing none, let's have a vote. Shereen.
Hi.
Corey.
Hi.
Dean.
Hi.
Jeff.
Hi.
And the chair says aye. Next up are our minutes of November 30th.
Move approval.
Second.
Okay, any discussion or changes? Good, seeing none. Thanks Shauna, she's doing great, huh? Seeing none, we'll go with Shereen first.
Aye.
Corey.
Aye.
Dean.
Aye.
And Jeff.
Aye.
And the chair says aye. All right. Next up is our public announcements and agenda item. I have two. Let me get my paperwork here real quickly. First thing is, and I think we all know, but today is December 7. And 80 years ago, the attack on Pearl Harbor was occurred. And it's not, it's not an overstatement to say this changed not only our country, but the course of history. I saw something on TV earlier this morning, a 99-year-old vet who was there made a comment because he asked him what they thought and he went through a whole long list and he just ended up by saying, you know, I did my job. I love my country. And that's about the way the Second World War vets took this whole thing. It's easy for me to say that, but anyway. I think it's a remembrance for that, what's called now our greatest generation and all those that went through it. So next up, I have a comment about Cape Light Compact rates. Next, the next, next six months worth of rates are, have come out. And, and I will say that even though they're high, they could have been a lot higher. And Cape Light Compact has been able to get them down below what you would, market value would be. But anyway, the rates for residential will be 14.699 cents per kilowatt hour. And if you use an average amount compared to your last bill, you'll probably be paying about 30 more dollars a year. So it's six something. That's just your power. You know, the rest of it, there's no control over. And I would, I would say that this is again, a great, you know, a good time for, for a free energy assessment to let you if you haven't had one in a year, especially if you haven't had one a couple of years, things have changed somewhat. So you get better deals. You might want to do it and it helps on lowering your energy use and also save you some money, the important part. So that's all I have. Anyone else have any? I see Dean has his hand up.
Thank you, Mr. Excuse me, thank you, Mr. Chairman. I just wanted to make a reminder that we should, I'd like to see included on an upcoming agenda. Request I made previously for an opportunity to have a preview presentation from the group of the former Monomoy Theater folks that are going to, want to put on a Shakespeare Festival at Cape Cool Park this summer. And secondly, I wasn't planning to say this, but apropos of December 7th, as you just mentioned, I think it's worth noting the passing of former Senator Dole, who died yesterday, a true war hero. And his accomplishment is far more admirable than compared to some of the folks that have succeeded him in Washington today. Thank you.
Thank you, Dean, and I would agree. Anyone else before I go out to the public and staff? No? Okay, I see one hand up. Stephen Buckley. Hello, Stephen.
Thank you. I have an agenda item request. It may have been covered in a previous meeting, but I think it might provide some help to the planning board who's taking input on rezoning of West Chatham. And there's an aspect that's not clear for me. I would like to provide some input on West Chatham, but there's one issue that's unclear to me. And so perhaps the board could provide some clarity on that. And that is basically if the contracts that the town manager signed with granting money, federal money to the airport truly obligates the town on. I don't, I don't know if that has been what the town manager can sign and can't sign as far as the authority to obligate the town. And so I guess basically I want to know, can the town manager sign something that obligates the town to rezon? So that's basically, that's the question. Maybe it's been answered some other place. So if it hasn't, then it would be nice to have it hear the board opinion as opposed to say the charter or some other, or the airport commission. Thank you.
Okay, Stephen, there's a lot. We had a whole meeting on governance. And I think this has been, been responded to, I know specifically, but I think it has been legally to a number of folks, but I'll take it under advisement. This is just a, I'll take, I'll, I'll see where, where it is before and I'll get, make sure I get back to you. Okay? All right, anyone else? Okay, seeing none, let's move into our new business. And the first thing up is Tom Temple with our PFAS update. Hi, Tom.
Good evening, Mr. Chair. Thank you, Select Board members. As the report indicates, well four is in service and being used during the week approximately two hours a day. PFAS sampling for that, that's dictated by Master EP is once a month. Well, five and eight remain offline until such time as the sampling results are well below the maximum contaminated levels. Weston Sampson has made progress with several of the locations for the permanent treatment for wells five and eight. As you'll note in the agenda package, the GAC vessels, we originally called for two 10-foot diameter filters. They were able to find a, they were able to find 12-foot diameter filter, which is double the amount. It holds 40,000 pounds versus the 20,000, which we were looking at two before. It's, it's a better solution for the town, less room required, smaller footprint and reducing the overall cost by only having to buy one versus the two. So we're looking at trying to procure the one vessel that also will still be used in the permanent, in the permanent design for the permanent facility. So you know, we're looking forward to them coming up with some, some quick, you know, quick designs on that with respect to in the drawings, I think, let's see, a, you'll notice on the footprint, the plans are hard to read on the agenda report and I apologize for that. But you'll see the big GAC vessel in the plan view where it's coming from the well number five and it comes through from well five goes into the GAC vessel, returns back through the GAC vessel and then it's tied back into the, what will be the 12-inch line for that facility. This saves a lot of room by not having to have the additional structure side by side and being put in the, in yet another bigger building. So we're really looking forward to see the plans as they develop. And when, once we get some more definitive plans, what I'll do is I'll come in person if we, if we're doing that at that point in time and be able to pull them up on a screen. So you can see them a lot better than you'll see in those agenda reports. Well, 10 and 11 that you see also in the report. They're well underway and the preliminary site plan that you see for that, what I did was I held the assessor sheet showing Mill Farm Lane just as a guide so that you could follow the property line. If you go to the end of the cul-de-sac, you'll see the property line extends straight through the end of the cul-de-sac. If you go to the plan directly below that, you can see that same cul-de-sac. So you get a reference point on where you are in relation to, to the proposed access roads. Now, the, as you're looking at the gravel road that goes around, you'll see like the, there's like pins in the, in the photo. There's B2. There's B1 and B4 and B3. B2 is a future pad. B1 is where the proposed building would go. The access road to the right that loops around, that's a gravel roadway. That's the access road to well 10 and that's a 20-foot by 20-foot fenced-in area around the well at the end of that access road. If you go back down to where the proposed building is at B1 and you take a left, that is the access road for well 11. And those little yellow lines that you can barely read, there's three of them stacked in a row there. That's the proposed propane tank, the generator and the transformer that are right below that. And again, at the very end is a fenced-in area around well number 11. So it's, it's good to see what they're proposing. We do have lines that are coming from this. We're looking at upgrading. When we bring this line in and upgrading Mill Hill and Dusty Miller water lines to a 12-inch water main when we do this work as part of, as part of this project. Currently, right now, as you saw in the pump and reports, we're approximately 18.6 decrease from the same time last year. I pulled up what we had to date for December and we're approximately eight, probably, I'm sorry, we're approximately 21.8 less for December than we were the same time last year. So other than that, you know, things are looking good for the system. Everything's going well. We're doing far less pumping at this point. We're giving everything a chance to, to regroup in our wells and be able to shut them off and alternate through. So we're servicing all our wells at this point in time. And things are running fairly smooth. We're, we finished all our winterizing of all our hydrants that we've had issues in with the past. They've all gone ahead and then had the antifreeze on those that needed to be done. So we're in pretty good shape. I also included in my report, just for an update, the water main replacement on Bridge Street, the water main is just about completed. What they're doing right now, they have the test, it's been tested and chlorinated. We're just waiting for the samples to come back. Once those pass, then the week of the 16th, they're looking at installing the, the drainage. That's part of that project. And then the week of the 20th, once we get the, the test results back, that everything's passed. Then they'll be doing the direct drilling, which goes under the harbor area and ties back in on the other side of the, of the bridge where we have a gate valve on that other side. So that'll complete all the utility work out in the roadway and everything completed. You know, before the end of December. Our goal was originally to try to have everything done and completed by next fall, but we've, we've really moved forward with the project. And we're able, we're able to get that done. And we hope to have it paved in early spring and everything finalized for springtime. And I'm available for any questions if anybody has any, any questions or concerns.
But yeah, thank you, Tom. I see Shereen has her hand up.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Hi, Tom. Remind me again, I just have a couple of questions. Remind me again why Indian Hill Well is only operating for two hours a day? Is it based on necessity or just, is that part of a plan?
Right now, it's, it's, it's based on the demand. We really don't need a lot of water at this point in time. What we're trying to do is just, this well, as you know, has been out of service so long, we're just trying to bring it in slow and making sure that you know, everything that, everything is working properly.
Okay. So the diagram is really difficult to see of the South Chatham layout. And I was wondering if that was online or whether we could get a, a heart of, like an email copy of that? Maybe to be able to see it because it is kind of small. I guess, okay, my other question is, and, and I just was thinking about this the other day and maybe we've talked about it, I'm not sure. When it comes to the how, the bigger picture of, of our water issues and things like that, and we are doing all these treatment wells, treatment systems to each of the wells, is there, are there systems set up in municipalities where it, where the treatment goes to one place and it's facilitated into one, when, you know, the water's put into one place and then goes out to the public? I'm just wondering if there's a more cost-effective way that we should be looking at our future water issues?
Yeah, I, I think it's, you know, it's a function of where the wells are in most communities, how close together they are. We have wells that are, you know, a lot of the wells, like six, seven and nine are in one area. So we're able to facilitate a treatment facility for all three of those. Wells five and eight are close by. That's why we're looking at something for, for those two together. You know, other communities that have them all in one area, they're able to, to get them all into one location.
Is that because of the close proximity? I'm sorry. Is that because of the close proximity or is that just a design plan?
Yeah, it's, it's, it's because of the close proximity. That's why they're able to treat more at one time. That's the, probably the preferred method because you're keeping the, the cost down. If we were to try to do that, we would probably have to take a look at our, our whole water distribution system and look at what the cost would be and the easements that would be required to go ahead and get all the water mains tied in to go to one general area to be treated and then brought back through the lines. As you may recall, when we did wells six, seven and nine, we had the raw water lines that were ran cross-country and came down through part of the bike trail and then part of Morton Road tied back to the plant. That's just one, one segment. You also have to worry about the pressures based on the wells that you have. So your, your demand and when the water's being, we've talked about it in the past where water may go past your house and depending what wells are running, it may go a different direction. You also have to consider, you know, the pressures and the size of the, the water mains that are out there to get the water to get to that same other point that you're trying to get it to and be efficient so that they have the same pressure in the lines when they're trying to get it out of their tap. So there's a lot that plays into that. They have all different types of pressure reducing valves and all different types of things to monitor and do that. But again, this cost associated with doing it. I think right now, looking at what we're doing, knowing that you have different wells and may have to have maybe three or four wells that are, that we can combine together. We do own land that we could run, you know, run pipeline through our own property to get to these other wells and services. Maybe that's something that we look at. And we have talked about it when we were finishing up wells six, seven and nine, about that very thing about how we, how can we treat some of these other wells and get them into the system or add on to the existing ones to save money. So we're always looking at ways to do it and we'll continue to do that. And making sure we're giving you the best bang for the buck for, for the town of Chatham.
Yeah, thank you for that. I'll probably have more questions about that in the future, but thank you very much.
Thank you, Shereen. Jeff's hands up.
Yeah, thank you, Peter. And I, you know, not to put words in Selectman Davis's mouth, but I think kind of what we, what we seek is a master plan for water for Chatham. And I think, I don't know whether that's vested in Weston and Sampson or where, but you know, not being experts here, what, what I look, what I'm looking for is kind of the macro look. What's the master plan for Chatham going forward? And I know it's not easy. It's very complex stuff. And I'm certainly not an expert, but I think in our heart, our hearts as a board and as Water and Sewer Commissioners, it's kind of what we're looking for. I had a quick question on the GAC, the one GAC unit, Tom. And I'm hoping that, you know, you said you're going to order it in the next two weeks or so. Are we okay with supply chain and it's realistic to say that we're going to get that and have it installed before summer 2022? I mean, to put you on the spot, but I just, I think, I think we want to see it online by next summer.
No, I, I think I did mention that in my report that that's something that we are looking to order at the next two weeks. And we're trying to get it online by, all installed by early spring and back online by, by the fall of 2022. So we're, we're trying to push it as quick as we can. If we can get it earlier, we'll, we'll install it earlier and get that all out to bid and hopefully have everything ready to go.
Yeah, I also applaud your effort at the map. I just couldn't read the little, the little things that they were outlining where the pins were, but I get what you're trying to do. So if we could explode those, that'd be really helpful and we'll get an idea of where those, where those wells are, where the, the building is, et cetera. But anyway, thank you for your report.
I'll try to get some better maps that are a little bit clearer from Weston and Sampson and have them put that on our website. I'll have I'll see if I can forward that stuff to Sean or have it forwarded to Sean. I'll have, I'll see if I can forward that stuff to, to Sean or have it forwarded to Sean to, to get on the website. So it's a lot easier for everybody to read and you can blow it up and actually, you know, see some of the detail closer. Cause they, they were very distorted by the time you pulled it into the, into the Word document.
Okay, thank you, Tom.
Hey, thank you, Jeff. Anyone else? Anyone from the public? Okay, thank you, Tom.
You're welcome.
Next is our, our public hearing and I guess Cory, could you read the notice, please?
Absolutely. Town of Chatham Select Board Public Hearing Notice. Chatham Select Board will hold a public hearing at 5:30 PM on Tuesday, November 16th, 2021 to consider a joint meeting from Verizon, New England Incorporated and Endstar Electric Company, DBA EverSource Energy to place one jointly owned stub pole, 76 slash 16 S on the southeast side of Sam Rider Road, Russell Street for number 115 to accommodate solar project on Middle Road. The public is welcome to, to attend the meeting in person or participate via link in the meeting posted agenda or by calling 1-508-945-4110. Conference ID 134208476 pound. All interested parties are encouraged to attend. Sign members of the Select Board.
Thank you, Cory. Who has speaking? Is it Dan? Or is it Tom?
All right. I can certainly, I can certainly speak if, if there's no one here from Verizon on our side of things.
Yeah, I don't see anybody. Okay, go ahead, Tom.
Yeah, the, the original plans that they had submitted, there was a lot of, a lot of issues. They polled that they were putting out in the field, didn't scale off the way it should. And it ended up out into private property, well into private property. And so the, the issues that we have have since been addressed. I included that in my agenda report, the, the issues that they had and what, how they've been resolved. I, I'm still concerned about the proximity of the proposed pole location where they want to set it in with respect to our water main, our eight inch water main out in Sam Rider Road. So I would recommend that they have their crew do the, a hand hole for that one where they dig it by hand. This is not a, you know, unrealistic request. We've done them in the past in, in other communities where they're that close to a utility. You hate to have them break a water made and lose that valuable water resource. And when they can easily be dug by hand to make sure that they don't hit it.
Okay. Any questions from the board? I guess if we approve a motion on this, it would be contingent upon a hand digging. Correct?
That's correct.
Okay. Any, any comments? Any comments from the public? Seeing none. All right. Can you have a motion? Oh, go ahead, Dean.
Okay. I move that we approve the request for a utility pole 76 slash 16 S contingent upon the utility company Verizon setting the pole to be required to hand dig this pole location, given the proximity of the town's existing water main and potential damage to same.
Check it. All right, any discussion? If not, let's take a vote. Jeff?
Aye.
Shereen?
Aye.
Cory?
Aye.
Dean?
Aye.
And the chair says aye. Thank you, Tom.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it. Have a good night.
You too. Okay, next on our agenda is a public comments on our business agenda. Okay, anyone from the public like to speak? First, I don't see any hands, anyone on the phone. All right, seeing none, we'll move on. First of our new business is a special one day liquor license application ports and company, 585 Main Street. And do we have anybody represented? Is Lisa in here? How about Shauna? Is she on?
Yes, Mr. Chair, I was just scrolling through the list of participants and I don't see anyone on. Again, this is a fairly standard request for service of wine and malt beverages at 595 Main Street on Friday, December 10th from four to nine for the Christmas stroll.
Thank you, Shauna. Any comments from the board? They've had it previously, I think, so, okay.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
I move to approve special one day alcohol permit for wine and malt beverages only for Lisa Lynch as a representative of Ports and Company for service at 595 Main Street on Friday, December 10th, 2021, from four to nine PM.
Thank you, Shereen. I see Cory's hands up, but can I get a second first?
I'll, I'll second it and then I have a quick question for Shauna. All right. Do we have to be more specific on the address since 595 is such a large building? Is that, I mean, I'm, I'm not being hypersensitive about it as, for, just for process. Is that fine or do we have to be more specific on the unit?
We have not been that specific on as far as units in, in a particular building in the past. We can certainly do so in the future if that's something you prefer.
Not a preference, I just didn't know from a process perspective, it's something we should consider moving forward. I don't have an issue with it, so I'm just, for future reference, I'm just asking that. But thank you.
Okay, thank you, Shauna. Let's see, we have a motion in a second. Let's take a vote. We start at the other end, right with Dean.
Aye.
Cory?
Aye.
Shereen?
Aye.
Jeff?
Aye.
And the chair says aye. Next up is temporary closing of an establishment holding an annual liquor license. And this is for a squire. Anyone from the squire?
Yeah, Drew McMullins on the line.
Hi, welcome.
Thank you.
Just give us a quick update. It's, it's here, I understand, but just for the public, anyway.
Yeah, we want to, like, we're hoping to close from February 15th to March 15th in order to just do like deep cleaning and general maintenance of the building. As you know, it's the former Thatcher residence built 1848. And can use a little maintenance here and there. And we're, we're hoping that you will allow us to be closed for 30 days so that we can give our staff a little bit of a break and do some deep cleaning.
Okay, thank you. I'll just make a comment. We had a couple of emails questioning whether or not that should be approved. I mean, we've approved them, a number of them that are annual licenses is, as Shauna mentioned, for, you know, short periods of time that fit within our, within, within the, what we are allowed to do. Any points or questions from the board? Seeing any, okay. So if we could have a motion, please.
Mr. Chairman, I move to approve the temporary closing of the Chatham Squire from February 15th, 2022 to March 15th, 2022.
Second.
Okay, we have a second motion in a second. Let's take a vote. Cory?
Aye.
Jeff?
Aye.
Shereen?
Aye.
Dean?
Aye.
And the chair says aye. All right. Next up is consider accepting a gift of an irrigation well. I emphasize that, well, at Kate Gould Park. Dan Tobin, welcome.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. This is a donation for an air, a well that would provide irrigation water for Kate Gould Park. There is an effort from the Chatham Chamber of Commerce and the Chatham Merchants Association working cooperatively to address this heavily used park. As you know, with the sharks in the park that have merged into mermaids in the parks and whales in the parks and things like that, the high pedestrian traffic puts a lot of wear and tear on the property. And it's, it's unable to deal with that, given the shaded location and things like that in portions of the park. So Gary Trulander, the manager of the Chatham Bars Inn, has come forward with the inn to offer this donation to the town. The well itself would be located right behind the backside of the bandstand itself. It would be set up below grade. There would be nothing showing on the surface. There would be no impediments to, you know, walking or enjoying the park in any way. And that's, that's the proposal that's before you today. So I'm happy to turn it over to Mr. Trulander who could give you some more information on that. But I'll be happy to answer any questions as well. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Dan. Hi, welcome, Gary.
Hi, hi, Peter, this is Gary. How are you? Yeah, just, Dan did a nice job. Can you hear me okay?
Yep.
Okay, good. Dan did a nice job describing it as part of the, the chamber, Chatham Chamber and Merchants Association Beautification Initiative. And we've been, we picked Gould Parks. We think it's the center of town, obviously. A lot of people enjoy it from the resident standpoint and also for visitors. And we're trying to make sure that we continue to help beautify as best we can and help assist where we can with, and we think it's, the well is a good starting place. Water is obviously a source of keeping everything in good health. And as Dan said, the traffic there is extraordinary, which is good, is good, is good use. But we would like to make sure that we can sustain that and keep it beautiful on a regular basis. And we have a couple of suggestions. We just planted a new Christmas tree that just got planted. We're very excited about that. And we are raising funds, funds for a new walkway, brick walkway coming through. The bricks are selling for quite, quite fast now. I think right now we're up to $60,000 in about 10 days, which is good news. All that, those funds will go back to Gould Park and to help part of the beautification initiative. But again, we think the well is very important to, to help with assist, keep everything in good shape there.
Hey, Gary, just remind me before, the part of the beautification is to put trees and bushes along the pathway or down by the bottom, I guess down by the park, parking lot. Is that correct? A comment, a comment was made by one person by an email that they should be native, native to Cape, just to. But is that, that correct? The irrigation will also take care of that?
Yes, it will, yes. And any, and any future needs that will come up. But a lot of the planning was along the fence line, along Main Street, because there's a lot of planting there. As Dan said, you know, some grass area, grassy areas that are from foot traffic have been trampled down and not in good shape. So we're trying to make sure the trees have been planted, the shrubs have been planted and, and grass is in good shape over time. But it's something that we'd like to, to help donate to, to the town and to Gould Park. And we hope we get some support tonight.
Thank you. I see Dean's up and then Shereen.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thank you, Dan and Gary. Gary, when, when would this well be dug? Is it in the spring or when do you anticipate?
Yeah, it's a good question. We just met, we did a tour just last week to do a walkthrough with Dan and Gary from the town. And with a representative from the well company. And they said they can do it in January or February. So within 60 days of approval, if it does get approved, you know, we're ready to fund it and we can do it in 60 days.
Great. And, and Dan, do we have an irrigation well in Chase Park? I know that's been the subject of conversation.
Yeah, there is one going in there. We're, we're just waiting on, on well drillers for that. But yes, there, there will be one there. And also eventually one as part of some renovations to the Sears Park Triangle at the corner of Main Street and Seabou Street. That'll can be converted overall, overall as part of a process to take these off of town water and have them all supplied via a well.
Is the same well contractor, the, this one that CBI is proposing to use?
Not in this, not in the case of the Chase Park one.
Okay. And I just would note, because we did get an inquiry from, or a comment from someone about tapping into well water at, at the time, at, at a time when we're very sensitive to our water issues. But I do recall Dr. Dunkinson in response to inquiry from Select, Select Board Member Dykens a few months ago saying that the, there is plenty of water down below. It's just a question of, of the mechanics of bringing it up. And we're not talking about watering shrubs with treated water, which is, has been a concern of the Water and Sewer Advisory Committee. I think this is a great initiative, the whole beautification project of the chamber and the merchants is a terrific initiative. And I, I, I think the town should be grateful to Chatham Bars Inn, our largest taxpayer for, for this generous offer. And I'm very supportive of it. Thank you.
Thank you, Dean. Shereen?
Hi, hi, Gary. Thanks for the, and Dan, thank you for the, the report. So it's just a well, it's not an irrigation system. We're not putting in big irrigation systems all over the park. It's just simply a well where a hose will be used to sort of water the lawn or water the gardens. Am I correct in assuming that?
No, there will be some drip systems that we've been in place, things like that. And so it'll be automatic. So, but something that we will control the water consumption, things like that.
Okay. I, I'm, I'm fine with, with doing this, Gary. I do really, really want to encourage the chamber to look at drought resistant and native plantings for the area. I think that in light of our issues with water, even though we know that we have plenty of it, I think it would be a great message to, to the community that we're doing things in a more, you know, ecosystem friendly way. You know, the, the, the Chatham found out Conservation Foundation's lawn is a really beautiful example of that. And they did a wonderful job and it's a great, great way to educate the people on bee pollen friendly plantings and things like that. So thank you very much for the donation. I'm going to vote to approve it, but I do again, want to encourage that we look at more native plantings for, for our, for our municipal parks and areas like that. Thank you. That's all I have, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Anyone else? Jeff?
Yeah, thank you, Peter. And I just want to thank Gary as well for, into the Merchants Association and the Chamber for, for dreaming this up. I think it's a great idea. I echo selectman Davis's comments about native species and, and those that are perhaps more drought resistant than not. And I think it's a very generous offering and I'm certainly going to support it. So I thank you very much.
Okay, thank you. Seeing no others, how about a motion? Jeff?
Mr. Chairman?
Yep. Dean?
Yeah, I move that the Select Board accept the gift of an irrigation well from the Chatham Bars Inn owners as this will provide an important component to being able to keep grass growing in this heavily used public park.
Second.
Second. Any discussion? Seeing none. Okay, Shereen?
Aye.
Cory?
Aye.
Dean?
Aye.
Jeff?
Aye.
Chair says aye. And thank you again, Gary. Appreciate it very much.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Appreciate it.
All right. Now, let's see, we're going to go into our final agenda item, which is a joint discussion with the Council on Aging Board of Directors on the Senior Center. Before we get started, I guess, since this was advertised, Barbara, could you do a roll call of the, of the, the Council on Aging Board?
No, I did not.
No, I, I know you didn't. I mean, would you do it now, please?
Oh, certainly.
Sure, thanks.
Carol?
Present.
Eddie? Eddie Magnuson? I did see you on there.
I see her.
Eddie?
She's muted.
Raise your hand, Eddie. That's it.
David Special?
He's on the phone.
Let me see who else is here.
Joan Bagnone, present.
Joan's there, here.
Joe?
Barbara?
Pat Burke?
Present, Barbara.
Who am I missing?
Joe and David, but David tried before.
Yeah, I didn't see, I, I called David, he didn't answer.
Yeah, okay.
Mr. Chairman, this is Mark at Channel 18.
Yes, Mark.
I believe that the caller at 6036 has muted themselves using star six. They may want to try. They may want to try that again to unmute. I believe that was one of your board members.
See, I see it now. That's David.
David? You called in? Can you confirm that you're online?
Use star six to unmute, please.
Okay, let's, let's go ahead and we'll keep, keep going. If I see him pop up, I'll watch David's telephone number.
Okay.
Okay. Thank you. This is a follow-up to our forum. I'm going to take a little time in the beginning. I just want to say, first of all, as you saw in, in our, in our package, the staff is looking to, for us, they have two points here. One is, you know, do we want to continue with the Senior Center? And second, what do we want to do after that? What are our next steps? And I'll give you kind of my thoughts on, on, you know, I, I believe that we have to make a decision. We want to continue. I think, I'll, I'll tell you my opinion right now, I think we should. The, the second part of this is, I, I believe that we should, and you can argue with this afterwards. I, I believe that we should come up with, you know, two or couple of options, two or three options and, and have the staff look at them more closely. We, we have a long history of, 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 of looking at Council on Aging Buildings, Council on Aging Locations. There may be new ones, which I think there is one. So I like to make decisions having an understanding of what the, the rough order of magnitude, I'll put it that way, cost would be before I make a decision. And, and if we're going to do something that has to do with a freestanding building, we have a lot of data on that. Even if we want to make it smaller or bigger, but more, if we wanted to make it smaller. What we don't have a lot of data on, in my personal opinion, is whether or not, what happens if, if one of the options that we were looked, that were proposed, were, were putting the, the, a building or modifying the community center or, one person said, modifying the existing location. And that's a little bit different. And that may take a little bit of, of, I don't know, a little look at to try and figure out how much that's, that's, that's going to cost. I do want to make a couple of comments. I'll give you my thoughts first and then, then, you know, I'll leave it open. I'll start with the Select Board and I'll let, I'll, I'll walk around to the, then to the Council on Aging the first time around. If Barbara prefers, she can call on her folks. But my, my, here's my thoughts on this thing. And, and I, and I got involved with the COA four years ago and I've been on two of the planning groups that are associated with it. And, and the first is, what were the big things that came out of, out of what we, what we heard at the forum and what we've heard at other times too? And, and first is, you know, is there really a need? There were a couple of people that questioned that. Is there really a need? Do we have it, do we have a, a real understanding of, of that need? I, I think the answer is yes, but I won't go into the detail. The other are cost and size. You hear this all the time, cost and size. When, when we were doing Middle Road, I thought that we were coming down from somewhere in there in 12,000 square feet to 10,000 square feet from, at that time, eight, seven, a $7 million to $6 million is what was sort of the, the roundabout number. Well, when we went and went to town meeting, you could argue whether it was location or whether it was cost and size, but cost and size still came up again. Here's my opinion on cost. Cost is driven by, yes, by size, but not only by size. You can, you can always put a dollar per square foot on something. But like I mentioned on the modification of a building, you can't always do that. You don't know what you're going to run into and what you have to do to make it functionally meet the requirements of what you want. Like a COA has certain functional requirements. And the building we're in now is functionally inadequate. And then how are you going to use it? How many people use it? How much is going to be approved by that? And then the location, of course. And we saw with a location, how much is the location going to cost you? And you may get it for free. So all those things are interrelated. And, and I shot around a, a thing that had best practices that were provided by the architecture. I won't go through all of that. I think in my general opinion, we should move ahead. I have a couple of thoughts on, you know, which options we should move forward with, but some people may have different ideas. I'm just, I'm open to anything and, and especially when you hear, let's have out of the box thinking, well, there is a little bit of that there. Maybe there is a way to, to move things around rather than have, you know, just, just think of the community center as one thing and COA as another. And, and, but at the same time, you have to understand the functionality that's going to be required. And that's something if, if, if we don't understand that and we just run with cost, I think that's the wrong way to go. I've heard that, you know, and I, I get it. When somebody says, okay, out in private practice, we, you get a number and then you go to it. That's true. And, and I've done that many times with different, with different kinds of projects. But you start with something that you know to get a number. You just don't say, here's $3 million, go build a COA. It's just not that way. You have to have an idea of what things are going to cost for what you need. And then you can either, you can, you can drop from there. Anyway, those are my thoughts. Anybody on the board like to go after me? Corey? That's why I see you leading over. Yeah, Corey, go ahead. Ah, you're unmuted. That's, that's my trick.
Oh, sorry. I'm just glad I haven't dropped off yet. I've been having all kinds of connection issues. So, no, happy to start the conversation. I guess question one is, do we move forward or we, do we put this thing away? I, I'm very comfortable with moving forward with the conversation still. You know, I know there's a lot of time and energy and money that's been spent moving this forward and I think it should be followed through with. But we've, you know, learned a bunch of stuff in the process. We definitely got to get a clear understanding on our budget. I think that, that's one of the things I've learned from the process is I think people want to determine exactly what our budget is for this facility. The location question, I think we're never going to have 100% consensus on where the best location is. I think there's going to always be a divide of some level in that conversation, but that's just going to be part of the conversation. There's been much conversation, discussion about programs, the use of the property, a facility, what needs, what needs to have to have at the facility, what needs we want to have at the facility. I guess maybe that conversation may need some maybe brushing up on, because I think some people still question what does, you know, what exactly are we looking for? I do, you know, I'm open to having some conversations and dialogues. Some locations I think still have great merit. Other locations, you know, I've clearly been very, you know, opinionated about things I don't like, but I will keep my mind open and have the conversation and be able to go back and forth on any location that we've discussed in the past. One, one question I'm going to throw out there, you know, and I don't have a strong position on it one way or another, but I do think we need to, as part of the process, if we are going to move forward, is a, a true understanding is, if we were to say throw the existing site back into, into the mix as a site potential, what could we do for that site? What would be the best option for that site? And would that site meet 100% of the needs that we're looking for? Or, and it's actually, I'm keeping my mind open on the conversation, you know, would areas of the community center, the existing footprint of the community center, no expansions, no additions? Would reuse of some of that property make sense for any programs or, or classes or stuff? I think that's a conversation we should have and get some answers and responses to. I am, you know, obviously less supportive of trying to do additions to the community center for obvious reasons that we won't, we need to get into in detail. I know there's people out there also who want, you know, 1610 back thrown on the, on the map. Obviously politically, that's not a great option. Mechanically, yeah, it's, it's still out there. So bottom line is, is for this level of conversation, I'm ready to, you know, move forward, keep my eye, my mind open. But I don't want to drag this thing out too, too long. We've, we've, we spent a lot of time in research on the designs of buildings, one stories, two stories. And if we were to move forward, I, I don't know how much more of a budget we have to, to do any type of research or redesign, reviews and stuff. So I guess the question I would have is, do we have any working budget? And what type of timetable? You know, do we have, as far as an opinion of the board? So I'm willing to keep the conversation moving forward, but we've got to be very conscious of the budget, very conscious of the location and very conscious of the programs that we could or could not offer. So that's my opening comments. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you, Corey. Good points. Okay, Dean?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Well, as you pointed out, we've all been working on this for a long time. I've been liaison to the Board of the Council on Aging for the past six plus years. And I've been intimately involved with all the several proposals that have been put forward. And I think we didn't hear too much that was new at the, at the recent forum. I think we heard a lot of those arguments pro and con before. I think there is some, there were some interesting and perhaps different perspectives offered by those who were speaking. And I think we're all grateful for that. As many people know, I personally favored from the beginning the existing site, not remodeling it, but knocking it down and putting up a new building. It's property that we already own. It's already functioning as a senior center. And we have sketches that were prepared by the architect with several different formulations. I personally think if we had followed that suggestion two or three years ago, we would have had a ribbon cutting by now and we would have had a building put up there at perhaps seven or eight million dollars versus nine or 10. But there was really very little support for that and I understand that. So I supported 1610 Main Street very, very strongly and enthusiastically. I, I, I still think it's probably the best location, but I think politically it's probably not a doable thing. But we shall see. I'm intrigued by the suggestion that Corey has just offered. I've never thought the community center was really a good location for this. But I do, I understand and appreciate that an awful lot of people in this town would like to see something at the community center. So while I'm not recommending anything, I've told the Council on Aging Board that I'm going to keep an open mind and consider any new ideas as well as whatever old ideas people want to offer. But I would like to throw out for consideration perhaps something that I think is in line with what Corey just said and distilling from the thoughts that were expressed at the forum, a combo proposal, which is to basically knock the existing building down, put up a new building that is scaled down somewhat from what had been proposed in, in the sketches by Mr. Bargman in combination with running some of the senior center programs at the community center. And we heard from the Chair of the Park and Recreation Board at the forum that, that that facility is open to that possibility. One of the criticisms of the existing location is that there is insufficient opportunity for exercise programs, for example. And I think if some of these programs of that nature were conducted at the community center, that would scale down the need for a larger building at 193. So again, I think that's something I'd like to see us think about. I'm not recommending it as the solution. This may ultimately wind up solely at the community center. I'm not sure that's the wise, the wise thing to do. But I do want to be sensitive to the, to the needs of the seniors and also the, the thinking of many people who express themselves about the, or at the forum and otherwise over the past couple of years. And I'll say one other last thing in, in response to the first question that was asked. I absolutely am convinced that there needs to be a community center. I'm sorry, a senior center. We are the second oldest demographic of 351 cities and towns in the Commonwealth and we have a senior center building that is an embarrassment and we should do something about it. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Dean. Shereen and then Jeff.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I, I agree with Selectman DeCastro in his last statement that we have a need here for a senior center and it is an embarrassment of what we have presently. And it's, it's been a very frustrating process to go through this and, and how we've done it. There's no other way. Town meeting speaks and, and that, that's what we do. I thought the, the various venues to capture feedback in the process that we've done so far was interesting. We learned a lot from what people were thinking about and also a lot from, you know, what their thoughts were on, on, on what happened at Town Meeting. There was some aspects of, of some, of what some people said that there wasn't enough vetting of this or, or, or we never saw a design for that. And we, we have three plans already, I think, or believe we, we had our eyes on. Plan for Stony Hill, plan for Community Center and plan for 1610. And I think, and, and we did have for Middle Road. Middle Road being off the table, I, I truly believe it wasn't the best place. Selectman Dykens and I both supported initially the idea of a combined community center, senior center at, at the community center. And I'm still open to that possibility as well as, I'd like to look at the three, those three locations that I just mentioned and move forward. Functionality is, I think, a way we need to budget, budget the project. I don't think we can just arbitrarily throw a number at the wall and see if it sticks. It doesn't make sense to me. I don't like the idea of disjointing the community, the, the senior center into two different buildings. I get, I get how that would be, you know, could work. But I think that isn't fair to staffing and programming and the continuity in the spirit of a community, I mean, of senior center. I, I think that it would, it probably, I, I don't know, I just don't, it doesn't feel right to me. But I, I'm open to hearing all of that. So yes, to move forward and yes, to take a look at the costs again. And, you know, nothing's going to be any cheaper than it was three or four years ago. Obviously, construction, building costs are, are at a premium right now. Supplies, issues and all that are going to be something we're going to have to face with. But not to sound gloom and doom, I do want to see a senior center in this town as soon as we are able to. That, water and housing are the three most important things I think that we could be working on as a, as a board. So that's all I have, Select, Chairman.
Thank you, Shereen.
Thanks.
Yeah, Jeffrey?
Thank you, Peter. And I do echo the sentiments of, many of the sentiments of my fellow Select Board members. Goodness gracious, yes, we need a new senior center. Selectman DeCastro and I toured it. Gosh, now it's 2018 or a long time ago. And, you know, it, it's just, it is an embarrassment. So I agree. And we've taken two, you know, two at bats and, you know, struck out a couple of times here. But I guess the third time's a charm. I, I found the, the comments at the forums to be pretty enlightening. I, I think I learned a lot about kind of what we did wrong in terms of process and why perhaps the 1610 site didn't pass. So I'm going to bring, you know, I'm going to bring those lessons kind, kind of to bear in terms of process going forward. Terms of, so yes, so we need a senior center. In terms of cost and location or size, sizing, form follows function. So the size of a building or where we put it kind of is, is built upon or predicated upon what we're going to do in the space. So, you know, the programming that we go forward with, that we feel is important, I think, is going to drive in my mind, perhaps even where the best location is. I heard from some quote unquote younger elders that they would like more exercise programs, et cetera. Well, we certainly have those in the community center. And I think, you know, my, my initial sentiments were focused on the community centers, you know, two years ago now, two plus years ago now. Because I believe that the synergies of what was already at the community center and what we could perhaps build modestly. Because I believe that the synergies of, like, the, what was already at the community center and what we could perhaps build modestly with an addition at the community center, um, would provide a wonderful senior center and a wonderful integrated community center. I thought it made sense then, and frankly, I think it makes, still makes sense, some sense. I think that's also what we heard as consensus from, at least I heard as some consensus from those folks that weighed in, uh, at the forum. I thought I heard pretty unequivocally, um, not, 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 you know, unilaterally or certainly not a hundred percent. But what I heard, um, more often than not was that that site was more acceptable to the, to our citizens than, than others. Um, I'll, I'll keep an open mind as, uh, uh, the fellow Select Board members have, have already stated. I'm certainly open to, you know, looking at the, the current site and redoing it there. Um, but I'm also open to a, a good study or an honest study on what could be done at the community center, knowing what programs we want to cite there and what programming is already there, what space is already there that would work synergistically with a senior center. So again, I, 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 I thought, I, I thought there was some consensus, uh, around the community center. When I went back and read that, read the comments, I, I think one could discern that there was. I think sixteen ten's off the table. The sixteen ten, we, we, there's no longer an offer of free land there, which is just too bad. Um, but I don't think that's even, even, you know, I, I don't think that's a possibility. Um, you know, we, we looked at a million dollar gift and, and said, no. And then I think the budget will be, you know, will be driven by programming number one, size then number two, and then budget number three. So those are my thoughts, and I'm, I'm, I really would like to hear from the Council on Aging folks, Barbara and her crew, and get their input as well. I think it's very, very important. So I thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thank you.
Uh, thank you, Jeff. And just, just before I go to, to Barbara, I, 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 I agree that, uh, we ought to look at, at the community center and how we do that is, is, uh, I have concerns and, and, uh, about how we do that functionally. Uh, the community center, the way it is right now. We're, we're, i- i- if you're, if we're going to have seniors in there, and it depends on what programming you want to put in there, but breaking something up out of one building into another, that's going to be a staffing issue, but it's an issue. It may be able to be worked. But that, let's take a look at the building itself. Um, and here's, here's my concern. Doesn't mean we can't do it, and it doesn't mean that, that, that we shouldn't look at it because I think it's going to, it's, it's, it's a, it's going to be also a cost issue. You come in that, you come in on the side by the gym, and the gym's there, seniors used that before COVID. Uh, all, all day, most of the time, three or four times a day with pickleball, pickleball. And, um, you know, they had that, then at night the kids came in, which was kind of cool. The basketball was at, at night. However, you then walk up two or three steps to get into the rest of the building. That's not ADA compatible. You, uh, you, that's one. Two is you have a small meeting room on the right, you have, and you have, um, uh, you have the, the offices on the left. If we're going to turn that into something more, something's going to have to be done. You, maybe you could just use those offices the way they are, but there's one little room over on the right, and then there's also a smaller gym. Uh, then you go up to the second floor, you have one big room, which is kind of like the general room that you would use, right? And the only other room you have is the club room. You go down to the basement, and here's my real concern is we're going to put seniors in the basement with that one elevator. I don't know if that's a good enough elevator, but in, in an emergency, it's not that, that you're going up, which done in many places and the elevators work coming down, but then you're going to have seniors on the top and the bottom. Is that, is that a good thing to do? Maybe it is, but all those things have to be looked at with the addition, let's say, if you were going to connect something with the addition that's going to be there, that's going to be attached to the gym. And then how, how do you make that work? And that's saying it, it won't work. I'm saying it's not just a simple thing of shoving something in there, come up with a bunch of rooms, and then, you know, congratulations, you have a senior center. That's my concern. The other is, you know, what about a standalone building there that you could then use, as Jeff mentioned? Uh, so I, uh, these, these are, you know, kind of my real concerns. Now, how do you, how do you fund that to, to get, get all that stuff taken care of? I don't know. The other is there's been talk about the, the old location to be used for affordable housing. Be easier to turn that into affordable housing. Uh, possible, possibly not. So, you know, I agree. There's no perfect place. We're going to have to come up with a couple of options. We're going to have to think about it generally. Uh, maybe there's another issue here. I'm glad that nobody brought up the school because I think that's, that's the worst place in the world to put a senior center. And I understand it's open area, but we should put something in there that has to do with kids if we're going to do this, uh, a, 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 a school. But it has all kinds of legal ramifications and all kinds of, of other issues that are involved. So, um, I, I don't, I'm not being a Debbie Downer either. I just want to put that on the table because we're going to discuss this. We have to be realistic about it. Let's say, okay, Barbara, I'll, I'll turn it over to you for the, uh, the Council on Aging.
Thank you. I did hit the turn camera on, but I don't see my picture, so I don't know why it's not working, but I am here.
Okay.
Unless you can fix it somehow, the tech guys. Um, I thought about the community center, thought about a lot about it. And, you know, it sounds, it sounds really good, but it would have to meet the program needs with minimal, minimal use of the community center rooms. So we're not talking about scaling it way down. We're talking about minimal, minimal scaling down. The survey that was done in two thousand fifteen, the Mammoth Mammoth survey, you all remember, uh, called for to meet our program needs was fourteen thousand square feet. We scaled back, I think, at that point to twelve, went down to ten. Uh, so we're at ten thousand square feet. That's what sixteen ten was going to be. Yeah, we could probably cut out a, one of the, uh, meeting rooms, the big meeting rooms, but that's only eight hundred square feet. So really, to look at it, to have it attached, we have to look at a building, and I don't know what it would cost, a building that would provide enough room without interfering with any of the ball fields or any of the programs the kids use. And, you know, with affordable housing moving forward, hopefully we'll have more young people using that building uh, and more families. I know Pat, who I'm going to call on next, did an extensive, extensive, uh, research on how the building is being used right now. When I read the report, uh, from the committee, from the community forum, in the conclusion, what really hit me from the whole bigger report, I think it was thirty-seven pages, was the three big variables for a successful plan that would be supportive throughout the community would be to present the cost, the location and size of the new proposed center with sound reasoning and statistics to support the plan. We can't move forward unless we have those things. We really can't. Uh, if we're thinking about the community center, we need those things. We need to have a plan. And yes, there were plans for the community center, but none of them were actually attached to the building. They in fact were, even the one that was closest to it, uh, was moved away. There was space in between. I think the reasoning was that some of the rooms wouldn't have windows, so they didn't want to attach it. But I, I don't remember exactly. I want to turn this over to Pat. Our board has not met. We meet next Monday. Uh, I don't know if the Select Board wants a decision from us on location or what we would support. Does the Select Board want that at that meeting from us?
Uh, let me give you my opinion. I'll, 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 you know, check, get, get a sense of our board. No. I, I, yeah, I just, how can you, no, I don't think you should making a decision, as you said, you have no idea what the cost would be, at least a general idea. We don't know what location is going to be. And, and, uh, a- and, 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 and you're going to make a decision based upon what we say here. I don't know. To me, that's a little premature. That's all I, and I hate to say this, but, you know, we, we, we have to decide generally what direction we want to go into with a cou- a couple of options or three options to look at. Whether we have funding, Corey brings up a good point, whether we have funding or not, I don't know, but uh, to, to decide now on, on something where especially a number of people recommended putting it as attachment to the community center, I want to know what that's going to, at least what, what are the real impediments to doing that, given the building the way it is? So that's a lot of way, long ways of saying, I don't think so. I don't know. The rest of the board, if you think what you, how you feel, just.
A- another thing about attaching it to the community center, and probably that's a two-year project of being built. It's going to disrupt that area tremendously while it's being built. Uh, it's another issue. Uh, I, I, I actually like Dean's comments of possibly uh, putting up a new building in the existing spot and using some of the community rooms. Uh, a hybrid program. I don't know. But I think our board can talk about that. But I'd like to call on Pat right now, uh, to talk about her, what she found out when she went through with the community center. Pat?
Thank you, Barbara, and good evening, everyone. And please excuse me if I'm tired. I've had a very long month doing open enrollment at the Council on Aging, and thank you God it ended today. So all those advertisements you've been seeing on TV will end today. You should all be thankful.
Right, thank you.
I, I had a ninety-five-year-old fellow ask me, I gotta go with the Joe Namath plan. I thought, oh dear God. Anyways, to get back to the community center, I, when we, I listened to the, um, the community forum and I listened to other presentations about the community center. I'm kind of a data person, so I wanted to know what exactly happened at the community center. I'd been there for a couple of, you know, yoga classes pre-COVID, but nothing since then. So I went down and I spoke with Susan May- Mably, or Maybelle, like, I think I might be getting her name wrong, and Dan Tobin. And they also presented me with some data. And what I was looking at was what the community center was like pre-COVID. So in two thousand nineteen, the community center had thirty-two thousand visits from people during that year. Of those thirty-two thousand people, eighty-three percent of them were Chatham residents. So it's highly utilized by, by the citizens of Chatham. During the same year of two thousand nineteen, we had eight thousand visits to the COA, and I was looking at that, that there's forty thousand people. We can't put forty thousand people all in one building. And then I went back to get a real tour of the community center, and I, I spoke with Susan and Dan Tobin and looked at what exactly was happening there. And, um, she was able to give me some data on their summer camps and that they have greater than two hundred and fifty kids coming to the summer camps, that they also host a lunch for kids who are unable to get lunch during the summer from eleven to one, kind of a drive-through thing. And we went through the whole building, and it's a lovely building and big. And then we went to look at, um, I went outside and I looked at where the grass was, and she told me this was where they had all, all of their, um, summer camps. So some of my conclusions were are be concerned about the summer camps and all those kids that go to those because I think a lot of the kids going to those summer camps are kids of people who work in Chatham and, and, and probably need to utilize that as a resource. And if we took that space, where would they go? I, but, you know, I thought, and I thought more, and I said, okay, right up the hill, there's a school, so maybe we could, maybe they would be able to use that for their summer camps. Um, I'm, I, I don't object to the community center, but I think that the last go around with the community center, I do not think we involve the, um, Dan and Susan and Meredith and people who are involved with the community center in order to have a collaborative approach and kind of bring everyone together. So if that's the route people decide to take, I think we really need to go that route because they're very informative and they, they really were helpful, I, I thought, in kind of giving me a broader view of what happens at the community center than what would happen if we bring in the senior center to the community center. I have to agree with, with, I think it was Peter who said about the elevator. I've had more people say to me, well, I'm afraid of elevators. Oh my God, I'm not getting in them. But I think it's going to be difficult to get a consen- consensus. I can tell you it, from being at the COA for the last month and a half, I probably talked to every single person I spoke to, which were, uh, uh, maybe a hundreds. And I couldn't get a consensus from five. So I think it's going to be a really hard sell for us, what, whatever the, the decision is. So that's really all. Barbara.
Thanks, Ben. Who would like to go next? Board member? Is there a hand raised? No? I'll call on somebody. Carol? Betty, you want to go next?
No. But.
Joan Bagnone on the board. I'd like to say something. I think, uh, when we. What?
Go ahead, Joan.
Okay.
Dave Special, Dave Special on the board?
Why, way back, that it was impossible to meet a consensus that I yelled out about the senior center. It's the idea of the young and the old, like it's done in Sweden and Norway, and it's successful in other countries. But at this point, one of the big objections at that point, this is way back. Um, well, there was a, there's a field. Um, what do they call it? Little League field. And, well, my kids learned to play ball there, or they can play ball. I, I, little league kids do not drive. Their parents have to bring them. And on, on Sam Rider Road are all those fields and stuff, and I don't know why we couldn't put a building in that part. We wouldn't be near the grass. It's up near the end. And if it was a separate building, and I think one of the things we have to do as far as programs are concerned, there's a great need for elderly people as, in order to keep them out of nursing homes and being eventually even having to go on Medicare and costing a lot of money. If a lot of the senior citizens, if there was some way with our having a center that we don't have to send our peoples to Orleans, and when we're building a building, I got sort of the feeling when we were talking about it at the forum, oh, well, we need a swimming pool. We'll let Parks and Recreation take care of that or the center. But I don't think that they realize the cost and expense of having a swimming pool. It sort of undid the one at the health club. Uh, it's a lot of money and it requires a lot of employees. I think the money would be well spent to send, to have a daycare center. And I think that there could be, we do so much to help people find things. It's not a social club, and I think a lot of people that are new to town, I think they're looking for another country club or a social club, or diner rounds. We can have this, we can have that. Or we should have a coffee shop, or maybe that would be successful. But I think the churches handle diner rounds. That's popular, um, and trips. Like we can have at the senior center. The library has their own talks. I mean, I, we, we need that. But I think we're, senior people need to be encouraged when they are like in their fifties, and, and there's so much that we can do for information. And our programs should be more or less around that. And I think that we're losing, wouldn't have to have such great big buildings, but I do think it should be separate from the uh, community center. I think we're, we all sort of agree that the, um, where it is, uh, it, it, it's a good place. It was a good place on Main Street, but now we're down a little bit. And there is, I guess there can be access from Old Harbor. There's a road by that Verizon building that could be opened, I think. But, and then the ball field is right behind it, but I think that would be a good space. And it wouldn't be on the grass on the side of the building, and it would be separate. And I, I think that's important, though. It's in the community, but it, it's serving a different function. Not necessarily, we would use the gym and stuff like that, but, I mean, seniors do that anyway. You said that in your survey that they did a lot. You said that in your survey that they did a lot. But I think we kind of get away from, it's not a social club. It's a, it's a community for seniors. And maybe we function differently even with the young, younger group. Just my opinion.
Thank you. Uh, David, you want to, uh, join in? David Special? Carol? Oh, Joe wants to speak. Go ahead, Joe.
Okay, thank you, Barbara. I think when we first looked at.
Can you hear me?
Do you hear me okay?
All right, David, Joe started speaking. Can you go next?
Can you hear me now? This is Dave.
All right, Joe, you want to let him go first?
Yeah, that's fine, that's fine.
All right, go ahead, David.
Hello, David? Uh, yes, this is Dave. I'm amazed, I'm amazed that the select.
David, if you're going to speak, can you turn off your other call?
I don't have another call. Maybe you got it.
Somebody.
Hello, please make a message to the panel.
Hello? Hello?
David?
Yes, this is David.
David, are you speaking at our joint meeting right now?
No, I'm speaking, I'm, yes, I'm speaking as a joint meeting and I'm speaking as an individual.
Okay, go ahead.
All right.
Are you speaking as a member of our COA board?
Right, Barbara, let me, let me have my say here. I am absolutely stunned at the select board that you people cannot come to a decision. You're cheating the town of Chatham. You're cheating the senior centers. Get off of your tails and make a decision, wherever it may be. All right? Come on, get to work. That's what we pay you guys for. Big, big bucks, I know. But get to work, will you please? That's all I have to say. I am stunned.
Thank you, David. Joe?
Yes, can you hear me?
Yes.
Go ahead, Joe.
Yes. I'm one of the ones that, uh, kind of favors the community center. And I think there are many advantages of the community center. When we first did the drawings for several different locations, there were three or four proposals put forth for the community center, none of which had the community center attached to, well, excuse me, none of which had the COA attached to the community center. And as a result, we lost the, um, the playing field area behind the community center where they have the summer camps. If we were to attach the COA to the community center, we would lose some of that space, but not very much of it. The community center back is about 130 feet long. Uh, so we would need a new design for the building. But if we did a building 130 feet long by 40 feet and had, say, two and a half stories, we'd come up with 8,500 or 9,000 square feet. Uh, there is opportunity, uh, to use the community center for COA programs that we don't have now. The fitness room, the aerobics room, and so on. And I think we could have a smaller building by attaching it and using some of the community center, uh, facilities. There's a large meeting room on the second floor. Uh, that might eliminate one or two of the program rooms that were put forth in the designs of the, uh, original, uh, COA building. Uh, so that would save space. Um, there is an aerobics room, but it's also a multi-purpose room that could be used for good-sized programming. There is a conference room. Now admittedly, uh, those rooms are all used, but not all the time. And I think with careful scheduling, uh, we could make use of those rooms uh, so that we don't have to have as many rooms, uh, in the COA building. I think, uh, when I think of the other options, I think the size consideration has come up many times. And I think a building attached to the community center probably would be able to have less size than any place else we would go to. Uh, because we could use some of the community, uh, center rooms and add some additional programming by doing that. Uh, I do think it's in the center of town and that helps. Uh, cost of is an issue, but we would avoid landscaping costs, which in some of the other locations were pretty sizable. There is the space, uh, behind the little league field along the left field foul line where we could put additional parking spaces, so we'd have more parking. That would be available. And I think if we carefully look at how we could blend the two buildings and utilize both, uh, I think we could come up with what would be the lowest cost, uh, the, um, smallest size of any buildings we could do, uh, use. And it would also enable us to expand the programming that we have for the Council on Aging. Thank you.
Carol? And Betty? Who would like to speak? Carol DeChristopher?
Yes, Barbara, I think I, I think my, um, I think I'm, you, can you hear me now?
Yes, we can hear you now.
Okay, good. Uh, okay, uh, I, I have several points that I'd like to make. Um, first of all, um, as someone else said, I'm really approaching this with an open mind. I, I do not have a particular preference for a site or whatever. I have an open mind. I am concerned about something that I heard at the forum, which was that we were not listening. And I'm, I'm going to take umbrage with that. And the reason I am is because, um, sometimes, uh, yes, I'm listening to you, but I don't happen to agree with you. But I am listening to whoever it is. So I, I wanted to make that clear. So if anybody has anything that they would like to say to me about this, I am only too happy to listen. From the person, with the open mind, though, I do have some stipulations. First one, yes, I believe we knew, need a new senior center. And we need a new senior center that is safe for seniors and that serves the needs, needs of seniors. And right now we have a senior population that is basically spans like a 50-year span. So what, what young seniors might need, old seniors might not, and vice versa. Um, the community center and Pat, I congratulate you on your research with regard to this. Um, we really, we, what we need to do is if we're focusing on the community center, have a really good understanding of what is available and when it is available. Uh, it is, this is from my perspective, another non-negotiable. Senior programs need to be administered by experts. Those people who are experts in gerontology. Um, what a yoga program looks like for somebody in their 30s is vastly different than a yoga program for somebody in their 70s. And the, the gerontologist or those people who specialize in exercise programs for seniors, they are really the people who need to be providing those programs. Um, this, this contention that, um, we can't spend money on seniors because we're spending, uh, money on water and on housing, that, that is a strategy used to, um, separate people, to, to make, it's a, it's a, it's a false, um, argument. Because the truth of the matter is, Chatham is capable now and always has been capable of doing more than one thing at a time, of spending money on more than one program. So that, that's really a, that's a divisive strategy. Um, let's see. Um, programs that are, another point, programs that are in multiple sites from an administrative perspective, and I did administer, um, uh, public policy for quite a while. The, they are unwieldy programs. When you start to try to administer those programs over time, it's just unwieldy. And it's, it's actually, it's not fair to the people receiving the service and it's not fair to the people who are providing the service. It's very stressful for staff. At this point in time, um, my only absolute is, yes, we need a new senior center. And the rest of it, I'm open to suggestions. Thank you.
Thanks, Carol. Uh, we haven't heard from Betty.
I could speak now, could you hear me?
Yes.
My name's Betty Magnussen. I've been on the COA board longer than anybody else, I think. I feel we need a consideration among the selectmen and among the COA board and the community. Um, the need is there. One of the things we've not discussed is a daycare facility as part of the building. There are a lot of Parkinson's individuals in our communities as well as Alzheimer's and other issues where daycare would be extremely helpful. For somehow we have to reach to the people in our community who always vote against us and feel we have no need for a community center, that our needs could be met elsewhere. This is not true. I'm really in favor of considering the community center as, as a possibility. And I hope that we can all move forward. Thank you.
Well, my board has spoken. I have a few more thoughts. Uh, we certainly cannot take the time to look for another site. We have done that over and over and over. And every time if we start all over again, it's only going to get more and more costly. Uh, the only site that the town owns right now that is the community center site. Uh, I'm leaning towards that personally. I don't know if my board is leaning towards that. The community forum, it seems that there were more positives for that anywhere else. Uh, however, it would have to be a sufficient-sized building without impinging upon the programs for the children. Um, but in order to move forward, again, from that conclusion, we need a plan. We need, we need a design. We need to know what that design would cost. Uh, and Carol brought up a point where somebody, I think Joe did, that the building could be scaled down to 8,500 square feet or 9,000. Uh, it could be scaled down, but certainly not lower than that. Um, where else are we going to go and put up a building of that size? And if it's going to be a separate building somewhere else that we're not sharing space, you're talking about to 10,000 square foot again. Where do we go from here? What are the next steps? What would you like the Council of Aging Board to do on Monday? I'm open to suggestions, Peter.
Uh, okay, thank you very much. Uh, you know, it, I, I have a problem with a knee-jerk, and I'll call it knee-jerk. I understand where you're coming from, Barbara, and I agree with you. But to, 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 to make a decision on a particular plan or a building and where it's going to be, you know, without having sufficient information, given that we have another option, which is to, to modify the, the, put something on the community center, to me is, I, you know, I need, I need information before I'm going to make a decision. And it's really good to say, you guys, you give a, make a decision no matter what you are. Well, I'll tell you, you know where you hear that? When, when, I have to put it this way, you hear it in the military. And you're out there and you go get the hell, make a decision, right? One way or the other, I'll follow you, but make a decision. Well, that's fine, but it's not good for municipal government. And it's not a good way to build a, a building. And I'm not afraid to make a decision on scant information, but I gotta have some. Um, I think, you know, you're, telling you what to do at your next meeting is not necessarily what I, I was planning to do. But I'll, I'll reach out to the board. My thought on what I've heard here is, first of all, the first question's answered. We, we need a community center. And given the 2,700 to 3,000 seniors we have, and I'll give you a number that was used for a six-month period, 2019, before COVID, they had 1,000 individual, uh, groups, individuals that were using the, the senior senior. And in the month of January alone, there were almost 400, 400 individuals that were using it. Uh, and that is for a, a place that doesn't encompass all of the programs that you really should have at a senior center. So my, my thought is that I'll kind of, I, I'd like to get, uh, thoughts from the, from the board also. And I see that, uh, have Jeff and Corey have their hands up. My, my initial thought is, let's look at, um, the senior, uh, community center, since it's been brought up, and, and look at a modification to it and what that would mean. And maybe a standalone building. We already know what a standalone building is going to look like, uh, in the community center. And, and, uh, I don't know if 1610 is off the board. I guess the, 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 the spot isn't available. But we know how much that would cost and we know how much it would, would potentially cost at, at the, um, existing site. And maybe we should look at that one. But I'll go to, let me go to Jeff first and then Corey, because that's the way it is on my screen. Jeff?
Yeah, thank you, Peter, and thank you to, uh, Barbara and Joe and Carol and, and Betty and, and Pat and, and Dave, I guess, um, for their input. Uh, you know, I said that, you know, tongue-in-cheek. Um, you know, we, we, you need a, we gotta start somewhere and we gotta get off the dime. If you feel there's going to be, we need a, for a community center, we've been twice to town meeting and twice we've struck out. Well, I, I'm not particularly interested in going back to town meeting with another proposal that's going to get shot down. So we have some work to do and we have some consensus to build. Otherwise, you know, we will get shot down. So I, I, I am, uh, open to, um, finding the money, that's number one, to, to a planning, uh, planning initiative, um, to analyze, uh, both sites, both the current site and the community center. I favor the community center, but I'm open to suggestions about the current site. I don't think it's a very good site. And I think, you know, I think there's a lot of work to do there. Yeah, I didn't like the plan that was there earlier. But I'm in favor of the community center only because I, I believe that has a lot of synergies and we can save some square footage by locating near the community center and with the programs it has there. But I think it's incumbent, Barbara, you asked what the, the council ought to do. Um, I think you ought to come up with what it is there for programming that you absolutely need. Is it the same programming that we had in the, in the building at 1610? Working, looking at the community center, is there, are there opportunities to, to, to not have the same square footage or knock that square footage down from 10, 10,000 square feet to 8,500, whatever, as, as Joe mentioned? I thought Joe spoke very well on the promise of, of what the community center site could be. All sorts of issues, parking, ball field, recreational programs, et cetera. Traffic circulation. But I think the opportunity to build a modify, a scaled-down, two-story building on that site, um, as promised. And it's one, I think, I heard, that might garner some consensus in town, we could actually get it done. So I think it's incumbent upon this council on aging to get their programming together, understand what they want in a building, and I think you're And I think you already know, but do we go back to that old list of programs or do you have something new? Or, you know, you won't have to have a gem because you'll have one right there. Um, but I think there's work to do, there's granular work to do there. And I think you may need the help of the town manager and her staff to do that, or some liaison, or some, some expertise there to, to organize your thoughts. But I, you know, um, so tho, tho, those are my thoughts. You know, we have the elementary school very close by. We also have the opportunity to think to expand Veterans Field, Veterans Park uh, for, for children, for, you know, young folks programming. I don't want to disadvantage them. So we've got a lot of work to do in terms of how we share the site. But that's the kind of work we've got to do. But you know, we got a lot of work to do. And this is the third time. And again, you know, I, I, as once a member of the select board, I am not interested in going to town meeting with something that has any kind of question of being shot down. I'm, I'm, I'm done with that. So we gotta hear all the naysayers, we gotta have a decent plan, we have a full-fledged plan, financing plan, smart plan, and we gotta vet it. And we gotta get darn, we gotta get a lot of comfort that it's going to pass, because I'm really not interested in sitting there and watching it get blown up again. Those are my thoughts. And I thank you, and I think we've got a lot of work to do. And I think the council on aging's role is, is huge um, in terms of what it is you want in the building. And I think you know.
We want in the building.
Yep. And how, and how, and how can those wants dovetail with what we already have at the community center? Pat's done a great job. Joe's done, done some decent thinking or some deep thinking, and Pat's done some great research, so I think you've got a head start. But I think that's the kind of input we need. Then we can size, then we can size the facility and, and challenge some talented architect or planner um, to come up with a design and a cost. Thanks, those are my thoughts, you guys. And thank you for your input, very valuable input, thank you.
Thank you, Jeff. Yeah, I agree. Uh, let's see, I, Cory next, and then Shereen.
Uh, thank you, Peter. Well, again, going back to my question I had originally is, we need to find out if we have any type of budget to work with, because that will probably be a big factor in how we move this conversation forward. Um, along with that, um, if we have a limited budget, which is kind of what I'm expecting, is probably we need to do through a couple, you know, certain exercises. Um, you know, the, the existing site was been thrown up for conversation, we have the plans, we bring the plans up, we look at them, we discuss details, thumbs up, thumbs down, either keep it going or dismiss it, one way or another. The community center, I mean, there's no big secret, I've had some opposition to that concept. I'm willing to have a conversation, I'm willing to look at the budget, the impact on the site plant, site. I'm also willing to have conversations about philosophical impacts to, you know, the current use of the property. I'm, I'm open to the conversation. I'm not thrilled with that location for a couple of reasons, uh, but I'm more than willing to have a conversation and, and let us vet all different sides, every little angle, uh, and collect data, because the data's really should be driving this. So um, not my favorite location, but I'm more than willing to have the conversation. But um, I don't think we have a huge budget to keep going on, doing more research and looking at sites and designing sites. So we've got to make a decision moving forward. And I just go back to what type of budget, if any, do we have? And that's really going to be a huge factor in how we move this conversation forward.
Thank you, Cory. Yeah, and I would agree, you know, the, the, the only real kicker for a, a deep thought uh, is what's it going to cost to, to connect that, connect the building there? And does it really save us money? And will it really help in, you know, uh, decreasing the, the size? And that's, that's, I face value, I agree with that. I'm sorry, Shereen, I took your spot.
That's okay, don't worry about it.
Okay, okay. One last, go ahead.
One, one last thought, too. Another reason I really want to bring this conversation forward, uh, you know, get this conversation kind of resolved is um, you know, we, you know, we lost a staff member. Mandy moved on, you know, wish her best wishes in her new position. But as we, as the town manager looks to figure out staffing needs for the town and the facilities and the programs, we need a clear answer on where the COA is going to be located, how it's going to be run, um, so we can best position ourselves to meet staffing needs moving forward. And without the, with so many unknowns out there, it's going to be very difficult for the town manager to really um, figure out exactly what the staffing needs will be uh, without those unknowns in the factor. So from a staffing perspective, we really need to figure this out sooner than later. So, thank you.
Yep, thank you, Cory. Shereen, and then Dean.
Um, Cory, you took the words out of my mouth on that one. That was the staffing needs, so definitely um, should be a play into this. Um, there's possibility of restructuring, maybe some staff, how staff looks like for the town. Obviously, um, I'm pretty sure the town manager has been thinking along those lines um, as just going forward with the budget this year. Um, you know, when you look at where the community center is in the fire department, and then you've got the school across the street, and you've got Montemoy Community Senator there, and you can think of, if you think of, of that whole area as, as somewhat of a, a municipal center of activity, um, I think that we could broaden our scope and say, you know, what role does Chatham Elementary School play in supporting children's programs or programs for kids? You know, and it, it's, it's got a lot of space over there. And um, how does, how does that fit into a bigger picture to be able to uh, look at um, the, you know, accommodating a senior center with a community center? So I'd like that to be kept into consideration. I, I totally agree with what Jeff had said as well, so um, and I appreciate all the feedback from, from the COA board, and again, from the venues that we received during the forum. So that's where I land on this for today.
Thank you, Shereen. Dean? Hi, you're on mute, Dean.
Still can't hear you, Dean.
This always seems to happen when Dean has something really important to say.
He has the same problem I have. Mine, mine'll go back on if I, if I hover over it, unfortunately. Yeah, you're still on mute, you can see it, I'm sorry. While he's looking, I, we have a couple of more from, from, Barbara, from, from your committee, I see hands up, yourself.
I'd like to respond to your comments, Peter, about, we have a lot of work to do about what programs, and, but of course, you realize that we don't have a program coordinator right now. We don't have a director. We have two outreach coordinators, one serving as the interim director, and Nancy handling everything at the front desk. So there are three people over there. And I don't know who's going to do all the work about what programs. I mean, Mandy put together a fantastic uh, diagram of all the programs that we're running. And at this point, we're going to have to go with that. I, I saw in the Chronicle uh, the Orleans Senior Center, and there was, um, they were running, they're running a class, a painting class that I would love to become involved in. And I called, and yes, they would take Chatham people. I'm fifth on the waiting list. And I called our center. There was nobody. I said, if I find an instructor, can we have it at our center? There's nobody to put it in place. We can't begin to even think about expanding any kind of programs. Um, anyway, we'll talk about it at our meeting on Monday. Now I know what we're going to talk about, our programs.
Well, that's, that's good. Uh, Dean is still trying to get on. I'll make one comment before, you know.
Peter?
There you go, I see.
I dialed, I dialed in on the phone. I don't know what happened, my mute uh, icon has disappeared from the screen, so that's a problem. Um, I just really wanted to sum up and say that, um, first of all, I appreciate um, the comments by the individual members of the, of the Council on Aging Board. I think this has really been the first opportunity in six years where the public has actually been able to see the face of the Council on Aging, because their meetings, which take place once a month, uh, don't get broadcast. So um, I think that's, that was very helpful. As I said in my opening remarks, I, I intend to keep an open mind about this. Uh, although I think it's pretty evident, my thinking is closer to Cory's uh, on, on the underlying subject. But I do um, respect the views of um, many people who would like to see it at the community center. And I want to um, recognize that we had a request for a presentation to the select board, which has already been made to the Council on Aging Board by the group that was, uh, the private group that was um, um, had looked into the Council on Aging. And I hope at some point we get an opportunity to hear that, that proposal. Um, I do appreciate what Shereen said after I had um, talked about having a combination uh, proposal with the existing site and a utilization of uh, facilities at the, at the community center. I do think there are, you know, there are staffing considerations that have to be taken into account. So I appreciate that's, that is, that is an issue. I don't, I don't dispute that. And I just wanted to add to what both um, Shereen and um, and um, I think it was Cory uh, said, uh, with the departure of Mandy, I think we have to ask ourselves, what credible, professional gerontologist is going to want to come to Chatham in this job market to administer a senior center if the perception is that this town can't get its act together about what it wants to do? Um, and I, I appreciate what Jeff said. I think we need to have to go before town meeting with something that is likely to, to pass. But I think we thought the last proposal was likely to pass, so had a very solid chance. But there is a very active constituency in this town that doesn't want a senior center. And they're going to militate against the senior center, no matter where it is, no matter what proposal. And we have to keep that in mind. So those, those are my thoughts. But let's, let's um, let's uh, see if we can come up with some funding to take a look at the um, in greater detail, the community center, and if there's some interest, we look at um, the existing location. I, I put that forward because no one at the community forum talked about knocking down the existing building. All they talked about one ninety-three was, let's remodel it, or you can't remodel it. That's never been the idea. You can't do that. Okay, thank you.
Yeah, thank you, Dean. Barbara, I see that Pat Burke has her hand up.
Thank you, Peter. I just wanted to, uh, ju, just as a point of information, in front of me, I have um, the community center options one through five that were done in um, November of twenty-sixteen, when the project was first started. So I think if, if people are thinking about um, allocating money, some work has been done, done already showing, you know, what, what options there could be at the community center site. And I'm sure if um, Terry Whalen was here, who knows everything, he would be able to really tell us more about these. But there has been some work done that we wouldn't have to redo.
Thank you, Pat. I'll come back uh, to the board. Let me ask Jill, you know, I, I know that, that one time you mentioned that you have a modest budget, if, if any. But just conceptually, is what we've heard is, you know, and, and in my thought, too, I'm, I'm leaning towards, let's say, uh, a couple of looks at, at the community center, whether attached or separate, and also to the existing location. We, existing location, we had two or three uh, proposals on what that would cost. At the community center, we had three or two or three proposals on what those would cost as standalone buildings. The only one that really, okay, you'd have to update them, but you get, you'd, you'd be able to get a, I'm going to guess, a rough order of magnitude on what they would be. And then the, the one that's, that's really out there, at least in my mind, is uh, how would you put this building and how, what would it cost to do that, you know, next to the community center? And, and there are a number of issues that I passed out, and I think came to everybody on there, you know, what the architects look for, what are best practices? Just go read that, you know? And, and there's a number of issues uh, there that, 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 that would be involved with this. Doesn't mean it won't work, it doesn't mean it's not going to be cheaper. But, you know, I understand what Joe said, and I, I'd like to agree, the, the Council on Aging is, you know, they, they gave us good, excellent inputs, and I under, and I appreciate that. But I think our next step, first next step, is to take a look at what a couple of options are, and then um, move ahead. And I would, I'll say this publicly, I think we should have another meeting with the COA when those options come back. I don't think that they should make a, a decision, you know, in a vacuum without us. This is too important, and it's, it's one that's going to be a collective decision. Uh, you know, I doubt, well, we'll see how it goes. But those are my thoughts. What do you think, Jill, as far as budget and so forth?
Yeah, um, thank you, Peter. The, Pat mentioned that we had uh, plans already for the community center. I think what we're proposing now is not those plans. By attaching the senior center to the community center, uh, we would be able to take advantage of a hundred and thirty feet on the backside of the community center. That means that we would really need, as Jeff said, to take a closer look at how we design a building that's attached uh, to the community center and is longer and not as wide. And by not being as wide, we don't really interfere with the summer camp space outdoors to any extent. We do to a slight extent. But I do think, uh, as Jeff said, we really need to take a look at that option and do some serious planning to see how we can integrate the rooms that are in the community center with the senior center needs, so that we can have less space and yet have more programming and more total space by using the two buildings. Now, that is not what was proposed before. The building that was proposed before for the community center was the same building that was being put in several different places. They were using a cookie cutter approach to using that same basic design. And what I'm saying is that we need a new design that really looks at how we can blend the two buildings, the senior um, center and the community center as one total entity. Thank you, Peter.
Thanks, you, Joan. And, and I agree with that. Uh, I would also ask that we, we would take at least one of those buildings that are standalone, so that you have a comparison of what the cost would really be, if we could do that, at, at that location. That, that's all I'm, I'm saying. And the other one would be the um, the existing location. And I guess the question is, we have enough money to do that now? Or is there a way we could do that? And if it, if it, all it is, is take what we had before and then put the funding into looking closely at, at, closely, we can't go through a detailed review of it, but we could, should be able to figure out generally what the, what our rough order of magnitude cost would be. And I, I'll, I'll, I'll pass that one over to you, Jill.
Okay, so I'm thinking of a, like a feasibility uh, study to ask, I could ask the architects to give us a quote on a couple of options as you discussed tonight, and then bring them back to the board as soon as we can. I, I don't, I don't know what that cost would be. And also, I want to give Alex some time to look at what's remaining in the existing warrant article, and then um, looking at my consulting and engineering fund that I've been earmarking some of the items for um, water and, and PFOS, but we had a town meeting to take care of some of those. So uh, certainly, let me get back to the board, we can run a couple of options. And then uh, if you want to schedule another joint meeting, we can present them at that time, or I could send a memo, just to make it a little quicker to get the information out to you. So that's my plan for tomorrow, is to contact them and uh, touch base with, with Terry and Eva as well.
Okay, thanks, Jill. Jeff, you had your hand up.
Yeah, I just wanted to echo what Joe said. The, way back when, when we had this initial discussion about a senior center, uh, I do recall a, a willingness or a desire to challenge an architect to fit a building in there with, with a two-story building attached to the, to the community center that would, would use the space in both, you know, this new building and, and the senior center, and the community center, I should say. So I, I, I would like to, I would like at some point to challenge an architect to do just that. Because I do think that it makes a lot Because I do think that it makes a lot of sense. It makes a lot of common sense to me now. Again, there are a lot of ancillary issues with respect to parking, traffic, ball field, et cetera. But I think, and I thought Shereen spoke very well to it, that as a municipal center, in the center of our town, that, that ought to be where the senior center, that, that's what I think. That's what I think. So I would really like to pursue that, and I hope we can find some money to start that, to start that ball rolling. Thank you very much.
Yeah, thank you, Jeff. Do we have a consensus? Well, let's see. Well, let me ask the board, then I'll let Barbara check with the COA. Everyone comfortable with moving ahead in that direction? In other words, take a look at the community center, maybe two options, one of which we already know, and then the existing, existing facility?
Yes.
Any negatives? Let me do that. And that way we'll do, Dean, go ahead.
It's not a negative, but I just wanted to say, just as the community center plans that were previously put forward are different from what is being discussed tonight, as Jeff and Joe have articulated. If, if we're going to look at the current, current location, the plans there are different from what I was proposing earlier this evening, which is a scaled down version of that to be combined with utilization of, of community center facilities for certain programs.
So. Okay, that, that, okay, Jill, okay, Jill can look at that, we'll see.
If the board is inclined to, to go in that direction and look at that too, if not, fine. You know, but, but I'm, I'm okay with the general philosophy of how you want to proceed.
Yeah, my, my only thought on the community center is you want a baseline against what the cost is going to be if you have a standalone. Just, is it really going to be cheaper? And I assume it is, you know, but I, it'd be nice to say that, because somebody's going to say it isn't, unless, you know, we, we don't know. And, and a smaller building over at the, um, at the existing facility, do we have plans? You could scale that down, I think. I, you're not starting from, you're not starting from scratch.
Right.
You know, and it depends on how we use our funding. But let me, let me leave it at that. Barbara, you, you want to, how, how do you guys feel about that for the COA? And also, coming back as soon as we can with a, an option, you know, for the, for us to make a decision.
I, I think that, thank you, Peter, I think that to look at the community center, we need a new plan, a new plan of the scaled down building attached. And until you see that plan, you're not going to know what it's going to cost.
Exactly.
You know, and, and the standalone buildings at the, on the community center site really aren't an option. It interferes with programs, and they're going to be much more than they were when they were proposed. So I think it's just a matter of possibly looking at the existing site and looking at the community center with a new plan. And if there is a feasibility study, if there's a working group, you definitely have to have somebody from Parks and Recreation on that working group, also some young parents on that working group, as well as COA board, the same type, to really look at that facility and what the programs are to analyze totally. As far as the programs that the COA are offering, it's the existing programs that Mandy presented. If we could offer them now, it would be wonderful. We don't have the staff and we don't have the space. So we'll talk about that more at our meeting on Monday. Carol wants to, Carol wants to weigh in again. Her hand is up. Carol?
Okay, yeah, I was having some microphone problems. Yes, I'd like to weigh in, because if we are considering the existing building, to Dean's point, I think we have to not consider renovation, but raising the building and building a building that is going to serve the needs not only of today, but for the future.
Okay, thank, thank you, Carol. Shereen's hands up.
Yeah.
Mine's up, mine's up from before. I'll take it down, sorry.
So, you know, I, I, I misspoke when, when Dean gave his comment. He was going to, that was the combo. I, 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 I don't know if that, that, I think having one, having that far apart and trying to do something is going to be difficult. But it, I'll go with the board. If we could go, do you think that's viable? We have to look at that? That's going to cost us more money to do that? Does that make sense? Or just go with the, the tear down the building and put one up? Like, you know, like what we had before, maybe even, you know, making it a little bit smaller? I just want, before I, I didn't want to give, I want to give Dean his shot, you know. Corey?
No, just some general thoughts, maybe in line with what, where this conversation's going with. But like, you're talking about, um, you know, two different locations. I guess I'm, I'm looking at it as we have a community center, which is open to everyone, every demographic, age, you know, whatever. So if you had a room for yoga, as, as an earlier example said, you know, the, the programs are different from a 30-year-old to a 70-year-old, but you're still going to only have one program space, a yoga room, an exercise room. So I guess that comes, combines with the conversation of staffing, because we could have elements at the community center within the existing shell that could fit the needs of a yoga program for a 30-year-old or a 70-year-old, based on scheduling, and then figuring out where is the best location, community center, existing site, other, that would be more dedicated toward this COA program as they are existing now, and how they want to move it in the future. So I, I don't think that conversation should be, you know, cut, 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 cut by shortly. I do think the community center does have some wiggle room to expand its space. It is used quite well in certain areas, and I think other areas does have some flexibility for maybe some reconcepts and reuses. So that, that's kind of where my mind was going with some of that conversation, so.
Okay, and if, if we go in that direction, you know, the, this, this, I remember coming in there at the community center night, the Zumba room is down in the basement. And we would have to, we would have to be determined if that's a practical use of that space.
The big coffee room upstairs, you know, is that, is that the best use of that, that square footage? I mean, could it, could it get repurposed? And without looking at the programs and the data, I can't honestly answer that. I mean, we, we probably don't use that. I haven't been in a, a meeting room in there for a couple of years, obviously COVID's a factor. But, um, yeah, I mean.
Yeah, I would agree with that. It, it needs to be looked at from, you know, if we're going to look at it thoroughly, and I hate to leave that one not open enough. And the, I guess, I don't, I just, I'm worried about funding, but I, I, that shouldn't be the, the constraining factor. Sorry, Jill, on, on which, where we want to go, if it makes sense. Dean, your hands up. Go ahead.
Yeah, I, thank you, Peter. I just really wanted to conclude by saying that, you know, if, if, considering the funding limitations that we have to undertake some feasibility work, if, if there's, there's no real consensus to take a look at the current location for the model I was proposing, and I think, I thought I, Corey was sort of along the same lines, or it's in the same category. If there's no consensus to go forward with that, I'm fine with that. I'm fine with not going forward with that. But what, what I just really wanted to end by saying that the model I'm talking about is to have a, this, a structure at 193 Stony Hill Road that, that handles the social programs, that handles the confidential outreach, confidential and outreach programs, that, that, that includes the office space that, that are part of this, central part of the, of the council on aging activities and, and to utilize the community center availabilities for, for some of the, you know, fitness and, and, and exercise programs, things like that. That's what I had in mind. And so that's why it would be a smaller building. It probably wouldn't entail the same, you know, type of parking considerations that were, you know, proposed for the, for the three, I think there were three models that, that Joel Bargman proposed for that. But again, if, if there's no real consensus to look at that, then it may make more sense to look at the community center now first and try to get the questions that you've proposed, Peter, addressed in terms of whether it's really going to save any money, or how much, or what, what, what it's going to look like first. And if, if, if it comes out that that's not particularly appealing, then we could go back to the model, like the combination model that I was proposing. But I'll leave it for the rest of the board to decide what you want to do.
Yeah, I, I understand what you're saying. I, I'm kind of leaning to, to try to do it now first, you know, do it all together, rather than go two-step. Now that it's out there, right? Now that we know what, what, what a lot of the, the competition may be, or the, the, the issues that are going to be brought up, if we don't look at it, it's going to be used, it could be used against us for not looking at it, in my opinion. Because it's, it's, you know, it's a general, why not? So, um, I'll, I'll go back to the board. You guys are, if we're ready to go with the community center, the standalone building only is like a standard, you know, what that would potentially cost. The, the real effort's going to be, what is it going to take to have a, a modified building? And, and I, I like the words that were used, challenge an architect, to, to really try and make it happen, given all their best practices, and given that facility and whether or not it, you know, whether or not it can work. And then a scaled down version of, somewhat scaled down version of the existing facility to include things like, you know, arts and crafts rooms and those kinds of things. You can't move those around. They have to be in one spot. And like you said, the social kind of things that, that, that you would also get into. And so that's, that's kind of my thought. See, Jeff, you're up again?
Well, I think maybe Corey. Corey has hands up.
Corey's ahead of you, yeah, I'm sorry.
No, I was just going to say, in moving this conversation forward, I think you need to have the conversation of, of the, of the community building and the existing site. We have a lot of data on the existing site. We have got plans. We can look at them. And I think at least, at least one more conversation on that will give us a better idea, if that's worth pursuing further, thumbs up or thumbs down, and we just remove it as an option. But I think it's too early to dismiss it. You know, we've spent a lot of time and money with some designs, that we have a lot of data to look at, and it's worth at least a conversation earlier, along with the other sites. So we can put this, so we can move this forward in a timely manner. So I, I'm, it's, I don't want to dismiss it this early.
Okay, thank you. And Jeff?
Yeah, I would just move that we direct the town manager to come up with or locate, hopefully, or at least inform us as to the availability of funds to start a feasibility study, or commence a feasibility study on. And I would suggest a new building at 193 and a, a building attached at the community center with the programming as directed by the council on aging. As best we can.
Okay, any?
We have to start somewhere. We have to start somewhere.
I'll, I'll second that for you.
Okay. Would, this doesn't have to be part of the program, but could we have the standalone building as a standard at community center? I want to compare, compare and contrast.
We, we have those designs. We have them in, you know, and we have all the, we have all those designs and the costs. Now, certainly the costs need to be updated, if, if, you know, for today's building costs, because they've, they've accelerated, they've increased, I should say. But yes, we can, we can do that.
Okay.
But I, I want to capture the sentiment of Joe and others that, that I think, and that actually, I believe, captured the sentiment of the forum. Now, whether it's viable or not, remains to be seen. But again, whatever we bring forward, I want it to pass. So we're going to get a lot of work to do with the community, a lot of work to do ourselves.
Okay, last, Dean, you're back up, right?
Just want to ask, can I ask Jeff the question? Jeff, does your motion with, with respect to the existing site contemplate the type of combination programming that I was talking about?
No, I take care of Christopher's lead, and, and, you know, I think what I'm hearing is that they want a standalone facility that houses, you know, the, that's what I'm hearing. So, no.
Well, I'm not sure I can support it then. And it seems to me not a good expenditure of public funds. I think we should just focus on the community center, if that's, that's the approach. Because we've already got standalone.
Yeah, we know how much that costs.
Yeah. Well, that's not my motion.
Look at something different. You won't modify your, your, your motion?
If, if that'll get it over the finish line here, I'll, I'll modify it to do the bifurcated model that, that Dean would like to look at. But I don't think that's what the council wants. That's not what I heard.
Well, yeah.
You heard from one member. I'm not sure that's what she, where she was going either, but, but I understand.
Yeah.
Shereen?
So I, I just modified my motion to include the bifurcated model that, that Dean, that Dean espoused, supported.
I'll second it.
Okay. I'll open it to discuss, discussion, your vote, and, uh, is this, gee, is this, is this a combined vote, Jill? It will be just the board of selectmen?
No, no, you would be providing direction to the, to me and the council on aging board.
Okay, and Barbara, last shot. Any, any thoughts?
Would you please repeat the motion slowly?
Oh, God.
Shauna, are you able to do that?
I think so. Motion is to direct the town manager to come up with available, avail, come up with the availability of funds to commence a feasibility study for a new building at the current site and an attached building at the community center with programming as directed by the COA board, and to include the bifurcated model proposed by select board member Castro.
So, so Shauna, just delete the, the reference to the standalone building at the present site. Delete that reference.
Yeah.
Okay, we good with that?
Okay.
So wait, I'm sorry, now you're just going to be confused, Mr. Chair. So Jeff, you wanted a, a new cost for a new building at 193, correct?
I do, I do not, no.
You do not?
No. Well, he, he.
The bifurcated, not, not a new building, not, not a renovation. Yeah, I said downside, downsized version, but not the existing building, not renovating the existing building. You would raise the existing building and build a, and build a, a new building that presumably would be downscaled and, and incorporate some programming at the community center. That's the bifurcated model.
So, so yes, Jill, yes, Jill, a scaled down, new, new, scaled down new building, yes.
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
Okay, any other discussion? Dean's hand, okay, you're.
We're timed, so we know what we're voting on.
Say that again.
Yeah, I tried.
Can Shauna read it one more time?
Okay.
Okay, how about this? Move to direct the town manager to come up with the availability of funds to commence a feasibility study for an attached building at the community center with programming as directed by the COA and the bifurcated model supported by select board member Castro with scaled down building at the current site and programming at the community center.
Good.
Well, I would, I would like to request that the word supported by, I'm, I'm, I'm not advocating that. I, I'm only advocating it be looked at. So you can take my name out, off of it. You can take the phrase supported by selectman Castro. That's unusual anyway, to have that in the vote. That okay, Jeff and Shereen?
Yeah, that's fine. That's good.
Okay.
Okay. Any other discussion we have there? Okay, I'll just make a comment that I, I, I know you're going to start on it tomorrow. And as soon as we can get something, at least an idea of how we move ahead, and then we can have a, set a date for another meeting with the COA. And I would expect we'll have enough information, not detail, but enough information to make a decision. Think? That's at least my, that's, that's at least what I would try to do anyway. Okay? All right, let's call for a vote. Let's go for a vote. Start with Corey.
Aye.
Jeff?
Aye.
Shereen?
Aye.
Dean?
Aye.
And the chair says aye, and that finishes the business for tonight. Barbara and COA, thank you so much. Before we leave, you're going to have to, uh, have a motion to adjourn, and then it'll come back to us. But you guys were great. back to us, but you guys were great. It's, you know, we're talking about 12 people here trying to get to some sort of consensus and, and thanks very much. We'll do it again.
I see one hand up, but...
Yeah, but that's, that's public comment that could be had ahead of time. That was, we were following our, you know, forum and, and we listened and this was up to us to come to this conclusion. Next one, maybe we'll have public comment during, let's see.
Can I request that the motion that was presented is emailed to me so I have it in writing for my meeting on Monday? Thank you, thank you, Jill.
Okay. If you could...
Do you want a motion for our board to adjourn?
I, I make a motion to adjourn our meeting.
Who seconds the motion? I second the motion. We'll take a vote. Joe? Joe, you approve adjourned the meeting?
Yes.
Okay, Betty?
Yes.
Joan?
Yes.
Joe?
Yes.
I think David left the meeting. The chair votes yes. Meeting adjourned for the Council of Aging Board.
Thank you very much, Barbara. Can I have a motion from the Board of Selectmen?
Some move, but Pat Burke was still on there.
Let's hear her. Okay.
I vote yes.
Sorry, Pat, I missed you.
So I have a motion, I think, right, to adjourn?
Second.
And second, let's, let's take a vote. Shereen?
Aye.
Dean?
Aye.
Cory?
Aye.
Jeff?
Aye.
Chair says aye. Thank you very much. Good evening, Chatham, and it was a very interesting meeting and it...
Good night, everybody.
It's productive.